All right. Meeting is now in order. That is not mine, that's Burroughs', but... Where's my gavel?
Burroughs' gavel.
Oh. All right. Look to be a crowd here, everybody settle down. Quiet, please. Take, turn off your phones, if you got your phones on, please silence them. We're gonna start the meeting now, it's called order. I am going to ask the Rev, that's Dr. Willie C. Jones, to lead us in prayer. And then I'm gonna ask Councilwoman Calmer to lead us in the flag, so...
Oh, pleasure, Lee.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for this day. We pray your blessing upon this mayor and this council tonight, this city, the great city of which thou has given us. We thank you for this beautiful weather, we thank you for your rain. We pray, Master, for these cities that are having difficulties, our sister cities, you know who they are. But we need you right now for your guidance and your direction as we step forward now to this business of this great city. In Jesus' name, we pray, we ask, and we thank you, amen.
Join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, flag, deal. So now we're going to the Mayor Council items, anybody have anything on there?
There's one thing I've already approved of this man.
Uh, so, uh... Jennifer, that's yours, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, anybody else got anything? Okay. So, we're gonna move on to the Assistant City Manager to discuss...
Mr. Mayor, I do, I have something.
Go ahead, yeah.
I'll put it on, I wait till we get to... Mine is the Recreation Department.
Or...
What do you want me to put there?
Well, we're just gonna, we're gonna do these now.
Okay.
Okay, all right, all right. We'll do it now, let's do it.
On the Recreation Department, the tracks, I got a call from, what's the director, what's his name? My West was over two, three months, well, basically about four, five, six, seven, eight months, like well over a year ago, that they was gonna re-march the track out here on Pokampi, isn't that your...
Mm-hmm.
Yes, and a lot of citizens are beginning to complain because...
The old JC track?
There's nothing out there now but grass and pine strop. And he was saying that they was going, they had this, he had to bring some backhoes out there and grade the ground because when they put the marsh down and it rains, the ground is so hot it just washes all out. So I'm just still wondering, they just wanna know because they've been waiting that over a year.
Yeah, I remember having that discussion, Frank, update us on that.
My knowledge is we still have given our shortcomings when it comes to staffing at this point, it's still in the mix of getting done, it just has not been accomplished yet. We do have Asahi to be put down, but the, uh, uh, launch put down, it's just a matter of getting it scheduled in. So, that's another time. So, I will do my best to accelerate that time.
Yes, because I'm...
So, why don't we do this, why don't we do this, Rev, hang on. Frank, why don't you give the rest of time, give him an idea so he can go back and tell his constituents what to get?
Give me two weeks.
Two weeks?
You do.
Okay, because I was out there doing my, ten miles, which I do a day. Well, all right.
Our lightning's already struck pretty close.
My four miles, which I do a day.
All right, well, that's bad.
And they maul, I mean, I cannot get around, I mean, everybody coming at me at one time.
Hmm.
And they screaming, and they hollering. One ex-police was threatening to take me to jail. You know, he was on the force, anybody that you know, Moffett, Dollar Moffett, yeah, he threatened to take me to jail. But I will, I will, thank you, you're welcome.
Okay, two weeks now. All right, Ms. Calmer?
Okay, um, my first question is revenue and expense sheets for Cruisin' the Coast. I asked for those immediately after last year, do we have them?
Um, no, we don't. I can probably get you something.
Well, I mean, will you know what the city sales tax, you'll know all that?
If I can find that, yeah, we take up the sales tax.
Okay. Well, I'd asked the city staff to get that, that's why I was, I really wasn't directing that at you, since you don't work for the city.
I don't, well, I don't know about that.
I was gonna say, you put in more hours.
I've done a pretty good bit for the city, but, uh, I will get that.
How about we don't pay you?
Yeah, we don't.
Yeah, we don't, we don't pay you.
It should be pretty easy to see, like, from week to week, as far as the sales tax increase versus...
The committee itself, what is, who collects the sales taxes?
Yeah, we actually collect it.
You know, they should have that.
I mean, we still get a sales tax benefit just from the people from, you know, the extra load we get in town.
Yeah, from food vendors and stuff.
Okay, so, that will include all restaurants and whatever, not just from your event, but not just whatever you're selling, I'm talking about throughout the city.
You're talking about citywide, what happens, citywide?
It should be a pretty easy fund.
He can...
I don't wanna see the month-to-month report, I wanna see the report that says revenue, expenses.
Do we have the capability of listening to that by week?
Well, you could do it from a timeline, 'cause I mean, we're talking about a week event.
Yeah, you should be able to get a week, should be pretty easy. And then, he can dial down, can't you, on what y'all actually collect?
Yeah, 'cause, uh...
So then you can see what you collect...
One of our newest committee members is the Hilton, Tammy Moore, who is actually this year going to a second event, she does an ice cream social for the last couple of years. And they've upticked in their business. I've asked Cruisin', the Cruisin' people, because I know Cruisin' and the, um, economic development people over there do a five-year assessment. I've asked them to, how do we go about doing assessment over the last few years for just the city? Because we've seen such an increase. And she's booking out people big time right now. We're about six and a half weeks out. And, uh, she's decided to go and do a second event for them because there's so many booking rooms.
No, Lagula told me that they were booking, they were filling up now.
We had a tremendous amount of people last year go to not only us, the committee members on the ground that run the three-day event, but go to us and the Cruisin' Board. We were getting calls from registration guys over at Cruisin' Central about the uptick in people saying they're coming to Pasca-Gula. A three-day event, we went, I've been doing it since 2015. And we ran for a couple of one-day events, and then we moved into the three-day event. When we went to Cruisin' on, like, 2016 and asked for permission to do a three-day event, they let us do it. Uh, we ran that three-day event, and then we got rained out on the third day with Nate. Last year's event was through the roof. And Woody told me himself, Woody Bailey, the executive director, says, "Get ready, they're coming." 'Cause at Cruis Central during the registration before they left last year, there was people going, "We're gonna spend our time in Pasca-Gula."
That's good considering the way they used to feel about Pasca-Gula.
That's right, that is right. Now, that was a long time ago, and I was in the sheriff's office and it worked, and, uh, what was it, Daniels they brought in as an entertainment?
Blake Shelton, we were in charge of him twice.
Yeah, and then it declined, and then we picked back up. And we are, we're running with a full head of steam. So, uh, you know, over the last few years, we did the one-day event, and we asked for the three-day event. It has really rocked out last year. So, going forward, we've, we've been expanding. We've gone from the one day to the three day, we've got a couple of years under our belt, really successful at it. The feedback's been really good. So now, we wanna move toward the goal of having it payable, having our event self-funded. And I'm not talking about just any fees, I'm talking about the fees and all the people associated with it that work for the city. That's the goal. So, that's why we wanted to introduce this year the point as part of that, part of that plan.
Which brings me to my second question. How in the heck did that end up happening, and I don't even know if I, you're the one to ask, how did that end up happening in the city without it coming by the council? Because, you know, we're the ones who get the blowback. I keep looking at you because you're standing there, but I don't know if you're the one to answer that question.
Well, you need to look at me, 'cause I'm the one that can answer the question.
Okay, good, so how did that...
No, I knew, I knew about it.
It actually come about in a discussion in the conference room back there on how we can pay down the debt that this thing generates. So, from 2015 to now, 2015, we had neighbors in the area that wouldn't even let us use their property. Well, today, everybody's letting us use their property to park on, everybody's being really, we're really working together, and we're doing it really good. And we're starting to really create the revenue that we need bringing in the city, uh, to help fund it. So, this was something that was born out of a meeting, um, about a month ago. And, um, you know, it's a way to pay down, and what we're looking at is, uh, the point with forty-five slots. So if you go into the point on the left side, which would be the south side, there's forty-five slips. Those slips have to be twenty by sixty, and there, that's room for an RV, a, um, vehicle, and a fold-out or pop-up tent. There's forty-five of them slots at five hundred dollars a slot. Last year was Harrison County's first year to do it. They're two or three miles north at the fairgrounds in Harrison County, and they sold out. So it's really been a good plug for them. But down here, the one, our number-one compliment is the view and the shade tree. But when they're not at that park, they can roll down to the point. If they stay, it's five hundred a week, uh, for that week.
Okay.
That almost pays, that's twenty-two-five.
Twenty-three thousand a week, almost.
Okay, so here's my next question, what are you... I only lived in a fifth wheel during the hurri, after the Katrina. So my question is, I know that those things have to be emptied, uh, every few days.
Well, they can empty them there, they all have to be self-contained. But there are vendors that we can get to come around and dump for them, dump their tanks out and provide water.
Okay.
So there are people that'll do that for us. We were trying to dial in now who's gonna do it, how they do it, make sure they're doing everything like they're supposed to. But this happens all over the place, it happens in Biloxi.
Well, I mean, you understand why I have to ask the questions.
Oh, no, 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 I'm good with it, I'm good with asking.
And I'm glad to know it's only gonna be on one side, and you've got the slips, you know, mapped out, all that kind of stuff.
Our goal is to have it all the way across. You know, there's nine boat launches in Pasca-Gula.
I know, but now, now see, I'll get, I'll, my hair on my neck's gonna stand up if we go across.
For a period of time, I don't know that we would have to go all the way across.
Yeah, because, you know, some commercial fishermen who live down by the beach use that every day. And I hate for them to be displaced.
For three days?
For a week, this is a week.
Or a week. What about when they have events down there, I don't, I don't see a big deal in that.
Well, we've never had events down there like that.
That's 'cause we got aggressive candidates, we kicking butt.
I would like to talk with them.
Well, that's my only concern, I, you know, this is, that's their livelihood, that's what they do every day, that's what they've done every day for years. I hate to disrupt that, so if it's on one side, and we can leave this side so they can park the trailer and launch their boat, not... And I realize we've got other boat slips, but if, if I live here and I work here, I don't wanna have to go park, you know...
A mile down the road.
A mile down the road, yeah.
Well, when you're hauling a big boat?
Well, let's talk to them.
I do haul a big boat.
But, so my next...
Listen, I, I would like to talk to them, if there's anybody that got any concerns. It's like everybody that's impacted on Beach Boulevard, you know, we make a point to go out and try to talk to everybody. Uh, before it happens, while it's happening, if they have any issues, we're gonna get them in and out, there's only a few that can't drive in.
And there's only a few commercial fishermen that are gonna go down there and launch their boats, so...
We'll take care of them.
Um, okay, and what about trash? 'Cause, you know, and I looked at Frank because that's our responsibility.
Yeah, our crews during that week are, um, out in force, but also volunteers are also used to go to the trash.
Yeah, we have thirty volunteers a day, we're gonna uptick that, uh, by ten, that's the plan.
The crowd that they draw usually, I mean, they're first-class folks, you know, if they ever have a problem with the boys that go, there's never any trash.
They're very well behaved, we haven't had any issues, but, but also, we're gonna, yeah, Waste Pro's also, I think, gonna put a dumpster down there for us.
Yeah, that, my only, the point seems to have a whole lot of trash all the time anyway, so I'm just want, let's get it cleaned up before.
Well, that's Frank's fault all the time. I'm talking about a week.
We've had pretty good luck the last few years, though, we hadn't had very much trouble at all.
I wouldn't think we would, but we need to make sure it's all cleaned up and emptied before.
Before the... They're pretty good about it.
'Cause on my, looking at it from his point of view, you don't want him to come down to a dirty point.
No.
Well, and that's one thing that, you know, John G. Boyd with Waste Pro and I already had a conversation about, in any event, not just Cruisin', but they, they've gotta be a bigger partner, which they have made a department lately, but a bigger partner on providing this, uh, this one-time roll-off dumpsters to make sure the trash...
Those are my two questions.
That it?
Thank you.
Hey, really, if they, if y'all, any of y'all get any feedback from them negative, I'd like to know, that way I'll go straight to the source. 'Cause we don't want it to impact our community negatively. We want a positive impact, and most importantly, we wanna try to fund it to where it'll pay it, and it'll be a zero to the city as a cost.
Well, I think if you look at the overall, what we've done, 'cause when I came here, when we all came here, it was, uh, it wasn't a, there wasn't a lot of good communications coming out of Cruis Central over there for us, and, uh...
We've changed that.
Yeah.
So, we've had good meetings with Woody, and I think they are, they are set to jack us up with, uh, more events and more things, so...
It's a lot of money coming into the city during that week.
Thank you, thank you for working so hard every year on that.
Come on.
I'm not gonna thank you.
Oh, I know, but, showing him all the love. All right, anybody else on the Mayor Council? He does do a lot of work, I will give him that. He's stressful in that time, too, just can't hardly talk to him. Just let him belong. Yeah, if you don't raise your car, man, you about to get eviscerated out there. I mean, Matt was in the circle, we was, we was outside the circle. All right, so, uh, now we're gonna go on to Frank, uh, for FY 2020 Budget Workshop Session Two.
Good, Mayor Council, uh, this is Session Two of Budget Workshop. As you remember, uh, these first two workshops are dedicated to departmental requests, uh, they are not commitments, they are not, uh, being fully vetted and not fully gonna be a part of the recommended, uh, balanced budget when it comes. However, uh, this is department head's request, and for y'all to have time to hear what they're asking for. Uh, as you'll look on your PowerPoint, we are in the middle of this budget process. We're gonna have at least one, maybe two more of these workshops as we go forward. My plan, and Ms. Rowene's plan at this point is, no later than next Tuesday, y'all will have a recommended, uh, proposed balanced budget to you for review, and then a third workshop will be set to go over that, that, uh, proposed balanced budget, um, with taking into account what you've expressed over these period of times, uh, both through your survey and through these meetings. And then, uh, we'll have the public hearing set up in preparation for the, um, the budget to be adopted. Uh, I will note that, uh, as of this morning, the school district has provided us with their, uh, budget. Uh, and I will be glad to tell y'all all, as they, as they said, uh, there is no intention on increasing taxes with the Pasco School District this year. So that is, that is a good thing there. Um, so with that said, tonight, basically, you've heard everyone except for basically Ms. Turner, um, and I will edit her out intentionally because hers is a little more in-depth as far as capital outlay goes. Uh, what you'll see tonight first is a general overview, Public Works and Capital Outlay on pages thirty-six through forty of your packet, and then the Utility Fund, uh, in pages fifty-five through sixty-two, Ms. Kirkow will go over part of that, and then also Ms. Turner as well. So, uh, with that said, Ms. Turner, give it to you.
All right, so, um, y'all are aware I wasn't here for the first one, so I really don't know what format you followed, what you wanna hear, what, if you wanna read through it, ask questions, or how we wanna do it.
Just go, and we'll stop you if we have a question.
I don't have page number ten, no. All right, so thirty-six, thirty... Okay, so thirty-six is just the overview, thirty-seven, um, it's a different format than what I've been looking at, so...
Well, let me go back to thirty-six.
Okay.
Three thousand dollars for street lighting. What is that for? Page thirty-six, where we started.
All right, but I have a street lighting page, so I'm not sure exactly how that plays in.
It's just lighting supplies.
Supplies?
Yeah, it's just the budget, it's lighting supplies. Uh, last year the budget was four thousand, and then we actually got a thousand, so, look on page thirty-eight, it's on the bottom right there. It's just supplies.
Well, your thirty-eight must be different, I'm...
Yeah.
No, so thirty-eight, right in the middle, lighting supplies.
I tried to combine those two together on the spreadsheet instead of giving it its own, all these...
Oh, I see, okay, I see now, yeah, okay, I see it.
Jackie, while we're on the lighting, uh, we're early on the Mississippi Power, is reviewing our whole lighting scheme to possibly transfer us over to LED, is that still under layer?
They're, they're under the power program, they're starting to move on that, um, should be, you should just see some activity on that in the next month.
Is there any way that Singin' River could do the same thing, or...
We've reached out to them, just have them move forward and move the purpose of our budget until we can get that...
We'll get that done in January.
Pasca-Will Street looks really good, have we...
They've done some of that.
I was gonna say, 'cause it looks good.
Uh, Jackie, on page thirty-six of the binder that we have, I know it's a combined figure, but do you see where it says under other charges, streets, one point five million, and property maintenance, about half a million?
Right.
Um, when you talk in terms of property maintenance, are we talking about maintenance of city buildings? Or is, is this property in general, like parks or the gym?
Property ma, property maintenance as it, as it fits this budget is the maintenance of our city buildings. Um, that would include City Hall, Delmas Avenue, the lib, the library is included.
Oh, okay, that explains a lot.
The entire Fourteenth Street complex, some support to the fire and police departments when asked, usually they tend to be more self-sufficient, but any buildings that are outside of the Parks and Rec Department generally.
Okay.
Let me ask a question. Um, Frank, we've had this discussion, all of us have, since we, we took over in this administration. Um, I, I'd like to get a total, and we've not, we've asked for it, but we hadn't gotten it. So I'm gonna say, uh, since you're here now. Um, I'd like to know exactly what those eight buildings cost the city every year. I wanna know what the maintenance on them is every year. I wanna know what the liability insurance or the insurance on them buildings every year, and any other additional costs that it may cost us on an annual basis. Put everything on an annual basis, so that when, before this budget's passed, we know exactly what all those buildings that are off the tax rolls, that we're not collecting anything on, cost this city. Everything. If it has to do with repair and maintenance, building, internet, copy machines, power bills, I wanna know everything that, that, that cost us operating eight facilities.
I'm ready to move on to another page unless anybody else had any questions.
If I've got anything, let's roll. Thirty-eight, or thirty-seven, do you have a question?
No, no question but thirty-seven.
Thirty-eight.
Jackie, on page thirty-eight, I, I don't know if you wanna refer to it, it's in the bottom half, under other services and charges. I noticed that, uh, drainage improvements, the budget is gonna be decreased by ninety thousand. And I noticed about maybe six lines down under equipment, maintenance, maintenance services, the budget was going to be increased by ninety-five thousand dollars. That may be perfectly legitimate, I just, the, the big swing in those two caught my eye. Can you explain why that is occurring?
I have to assume that's a typo, that's not what I sent in.
That happens.
I sent in a hundred thousand for drainage and ten thousand for equipment.
Okay, that's, that's my bad probably, I can get that fixed.
Okay, all right.
That's a good catch, a hundred thousand for drainage and what, Jack?
Ten thousand for equipment maintenance.
So, I mean, it, it's a wash, we're just swapping numbers.
Right.
Okay, all right, that, that would explain it.
Ms. Jackie?
Mm-hmm.
Landscape is supplied, what kind of supply?
So, when we have to do, um, drainage, sewer, water work or anything like that, and we...
You have to do what now?
Any kind of underground work, and we have to come back and put surface back on, whether we have to replace whatever was there that we tore up, we come back in and, and put back in.
You mean like plants?
We don't typically do plants, but if we have, if, we have to put grass back, we have to put sod that matches the sod that we took out. If, if we go through, I don't wanna get ornate, 'cause we don't put plants back, but, you know, we try to match whatever material was there. And that would go for, um, public property as well as private property through easement.
So, okay, thank you.
All right, anything else on thirty-eight? Thirty-nine?
The, um, under thirty, on the last line item, Jackie, for Public Works contract, is, is that a anticipated increase in the contract? Uh, assume that's to utility partners?
The, uh, utility partners contract as submitted in the budget reflects a zero change. This is gonna reflect just balancing between, um, line items based on current allocation of their staff. So that the overall total is the same.
Between different funds, it's, we didn't anticipate an increase. But after the gas sale, the gas fund took on a, a large portion of, of this contract. So, she had to go back in and reallocate out, uh, the, the services between the different funds, so it's an increase in this fund. You'll see decreases in other funds.
The, the big difference you're gonna see that, it, what you'll see reflects what has happened since the gas sale, but since the last year's budget reflected part before and part after, the two-year budgets are gonna be different. But the, the monthly allocation continues as it's been since the sale.
Okay, all right.
Questions on forty? Forty-one?
So forty is the proposed capital budget?
On the Hospital Road project, is that, again, are these bond proceeds that are being used to fund this?
No.
Okay, this is coming out of, out of our money, or, uh, being reimbursed to us though ultimately by M.D.O.T., is that the anticipation?
Not this part. This part is our local match requirement. I believe that we've worked through that this is supposed to be, um, you see the parentheses there, remaining unencumbered balance to be carried over. So, uh, my understanding is that we're gonna be able to write all the POs for that out of this year's budget and then carry that money forward. But I wanna make sure that we accounted for it in here in case I was wrong there.
Okay, all right, so hopefully this may come off, not the final budget, but maybe a budget amendment coming up in, at some point after the new fiscal year begins?
Well, um, it's, it's already budgeted in this current year.
Right.
Um, and we were just making sure to incorporate it into next year's budget if this money was not spent in the current year, because it has been budgeted. It looks like it's going to get...
This is, this is one of the unique things to all of my various accounts with capital, is that mine tend to not stop at the end of September and start in October. And somehow, I always seem to be starting work about this time, which makes it confusing, and I'd rather, I'd rather write it down twice... and I'd rather, I'd rather write it down twice and not miss it than what has happened occasionally where we all assume everybody knows that I'm spending that million dollars in it.
The light bulb finally went off, I remember you saying this last year, okay.
Yeah. So, so as, as it's noted here, the remaining unencumbered balance to be carried over at the year end, so the intent there is to write the POs this year out of this year's fiscal budget and carry over the POs into the next year, but just making sure that in case there's something that doesn't go right there, we have it noted.
I'd like for you to talk a little bit about the mobile equipment that is said to be replaced. The, the numbers here that you have, I'm, I'm assuming the thirty K for the three-quarter ton crew truck and the one-ton dump body of thirty-six thousand, are those replacement costs that you've estimated?
They're replacement costs based on state bid for similar equipment plus outfitting, you know, when you have to put on like the, the crew boxes and stuff, so these are estimated based on state bids with the, the known equipment that needs to go on them.
And, and I don't expect a, a year and a month, but the equipment that they are replacing, how old is it?
So, the first two, I'm going to actually be discussing as, those are probably things that we can take off of the budget, the last one is a nineteen ninety-seven, so it's twenty-three years old with over a million miles on it, and it is currently in the shop, which means that we can't haul our backhoes or anything out to a job, so that one's getting, that one's kind of critical.
Jackie, this mobile equipment, is this contracted, uh, equipment, is it in the city?
I'm sorry?
These, these items, are they contracted equipment or city?
They're city-owned equipment. Right now it should be quick, it's just an alternator, but the, the more that that happens, the more often there's a problem, and, and we don't have a backup, so.
Ninety-seven million miles, I got no issues with getting that fixed.
Ninety-seven million?
Over a million, not ninety-seven.
Nah, I said no, I said ninety, a ninety-seven with over a million miles.
Yes, sir.
That's, that's something you need to-
I think that's something we've used up.
Yeah, get your money's worth out of that.
So then there's three of them there with asterisks next to them that y'all have already approved that should come from the gas sale as, as previously approved, and then there's a number of other proposed projects and efforts based on what I submitted in as a ten-year capital plan that we develop every year, allocating what work needs to be done over the course of ten years and saying out of that, this would be this fiscal year. Typically, we know that that's going to get adjusted, I don't know that you can do that forever. You know, deferred maintenance on your house doesn't work either. So, this is, this is a responsible representation of what needs to be done, but I do understand that there's budget restrictions that we also have to follow.
On the dredging part, is that primarily inner harbor?
That's just allocating some funds so that we can do something.
Okay, but at, is this dredging for drainage purposes or dredging for recreational purposes? I guess is what I'm trying to understand.
This would be any eligible permitted dredging activity that I have put in that ten-year plan as that budgeted amount each year, and so whatever is the highest priority area that you'd like to pursue if it stays in.
Okay.
I'm looking at the clean and inspected drainage, is that monthly or quarterly, or is, and is it citywide?
Again, that's going to be an allocation that I put in that plan for the same amount for each year over the course of the, of the time, and that basically is when we have an issue that we know something is clogged, we know there's a sinkhole we need to investigate it, we've got annual contracts that let us come in, jet them out, and video them, so that allows us to have funds available to do that. We have done that on a limited basis in the past, so we've identified projects and we can determine from there whether we can line a project, save money doing it that way, or if we've got to do point repairs or complete pipe replacement. So, that's, that's what that allocation is for, is to be able to clean, video, and investigate problems as they come up.
What kind of maintenance plans do you have on these buildings? Do we do regular update, regular maintenance? Do we go around and see what we need to fix or get fixed, or do we have a five-year plan?
We, we don't have any regular maintenance plan in place, we don't have anybody, any staff dedicated to doing that, we have basically carpenters and laborers through the utility partners contract that are assigned to come out and respond to calls.
So this is one of the things talked about last year. So, just like we did both, I think we did Lake Fire Department, that's what we did, and then, where's Kenny?
This is the chief's loose, this is all about her, and I'll put them, I'll be nice, so you go ahead and go.
Oh, okay, well, now I got a question for the chief, I appreciate that.
Ask the other chief.
The other chief, don't we? My thing is, is you've got, you know, your police department that's got five and a half, five point eight million dollars worth of repairs, whatever it is, and the value's only like a million and a half. That never happens unless you do maintenance on it and upgrade it and up, you know, remodel it frequently, so, you know, that's what happened in the past. What I'm trying to do is move forward with a plan that every five years, we, we allocate, or two years, or whatever it may be, to remodel and re-updating, and then fixing these things where we don't take, you know, whatever that PD was, because I remember when it was built, was it eighty-one, eighty-two? It was like the state-of-the-art law enforcement complex.
Right.
And now it's what it is.
I would say that's probably the same for just about every building that we have. I, I can speak from my experience that in the time I've been involved with preparing budgets, so twelve years now, a new roof on this building has been proposed every year and has never made it.
On this building?
Mm-hmm.
This building is in terrible shape. I don't even know why we have council meetings here, but, because we don't have anywhere else to go, I guess. And I guess, again, when, you know, our intention, we all talked about it as council, when we came in, before we knew that we were swimming in a hole, that we were going to try to do something about this, and I think if you take and rebuild, and it's not the popular thing to do, but I, I think it's important from a business perspective is to build a new City Hall, put everybody in one building, and, and put the rest of these eight properties on the tax roll, or demolish the buildings or whatever, because this one, I don't know how long it's been in condemned shape, so.
At least make the land available.
Make the land available.
Sure.
Would save us money, you know, you're talking about building, we're putting eight buildings out there we're paying for, we got the maintenance on them, several of them, I mean, are just, the library, in terrible shape. You got all this money and investment that the taxpayers have made, and now they're not worth anything, so if we combine them and put them all in one, it would save the taxpayers every year, probably. I'd like to look at that. There you go, there's another idea. Let's do that, let's look at all those expenses that I talked about earlier and compare them to what a new, a new complex would cost, see if there's any savings there that we can do. It's not a popular thing to do, but the bottom line is, it would be if they knew that they were going to save, you know, three hundred and fifty thousand a year, or whatever it may be, so. Can we add that to the list?
Yeah.
There you go, I'm good, next. Anybody got anything? Forty-one?
Fifty-five. Yeah, fifty-five, fifty-six, fifty-seven.
Fifty-sixty-two.
Actually, that's me, yours.
Which page are you starting on?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five.
Yeah, let Ms. Shaw talk to you about.
That's so that Facebook world knows.
This is the utility fund, so I'll let Ms. Sharlene discuss this.
This is the utility public, utility fund and accounting meter services, the only, some of this does belong to Jackie, and the, the water sewer operating maintenance and the sewer operating maintenance is hers, and the, the utility administration is also hers. Any questions?
I think I've seen, may have said this last year, it seems like to have almost eight million dollars of the total, almost twelve million dollar budget under other charges, it, it, that's a, that's a big other, so can you explain real quickly what utility general overhead of two million dollars is, and I, I know what O and M is for water and sewer.
Okay, the general overhead is, is mostly the administrative reimbursement, that the biggest portion of that other services and charges is the administrative reimbursement that the utility will refund, I mean, will issue to the general fund for services that the general fund provides to the public utilities.
And just, is that in line with what has been done in years past as far as the total number?
Actually, we, we decreased it this year, about a hundred, a hundred fifty thousand dollars, we decreased it, and I, I found an old file showing a-
See decrease?
Yeah, a steady to hit, yeah, a slight decrease every year to try to, I think it was projected that they would try to get that down to like a million dollars over the next five years, so that's, I was just kind of following along with that projection.
And, and just, I know you weren't here, but in terms of what we've been told now from two audits, Frank, I guess this question's for you, you're fine with this number in terms of the total amount?
The decrease, yes. First, our result is this, this is allowable, it's perfectly in line. We have actually outlined where those allocations should come from, and we're, and we're going to codify them in some kind of policy going forward to our SOPs, that you'll know exactly where you look at and what those charges come from, so we'll have that to you as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you. That's all I had on that page.
Fifty-six?
Yes.
Yeah, we do have, we did budget for an additional temporary help in the water and sewer utility collections.
Building's worked, and we have to hand some of it over there.
So you, you see on page fifty-seven that additional ten thousand dollars?
Well, it was twenty-five last year, I guess we needed more help last year than we do this year.
Could you?
The, 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 the gas sale. The plant was small, so.
Okay. I get it. And just again, the professional services, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars, I know we're decreasing that by twenty thousand, and I'm referring specifically on page fifty-seven. Remind me again what the professional services are?
A portion of that professional services is the audit fee, that's a small portion of it.
Right.
Other professional services in the utility building, cut off my head.
Part of it's meter services, and part of it is, I think, OT issues. I need you to bring it up for sure.
It's, that's fine, I just wanted to hear that, okay?
Fifty-eight?
Yep, there's your audit fee.
There's, there's your reimbursement fee right there, okay.
Okay.
Is that where you want?
That's metering services, so that's still in the, but-
That's what, so it's sixty-one and sixty-two.
Good.
Yes.
Because there's no water and sewer capital listed here, and the utility fees.
Okay.
You question large?
Which one, sixty-one?
Sixty-one or sixty-two.
Yeah. Let's talk about this water tower painting, where we at, it's, it's two hundred fourteen thousand.
So-
What, which one is that, where's that, what's?
It's an annual contract that covers all of the water tanks, we have four elevated tanks, and I think three ground tanks, and so they do a regular maintenance and painting contract on all of them, and there is one of them, and I, I think it's at Comedy, there was one of them that needed a three-year complete repainting, and this will be year two of that installment. So they took it out of service, drained it, repainted it from, in the inside and out.
Maintenance.
Huh? Well, why don't y'all do it on everything else?
We're trying to get the structure to be able to pass free.
They don't care when you say it, they think what you drive.
So I guess what you're saying is, we're contractually obligated to make this payment?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the frustrating thing about this regular maintenance is this, I think I put in some six million dollars worth of regular maintenance for the underground stuff, and I'm going to bet you won't find that money, so, I mean, it's, it's, it's what we're all facing at home, it's what we're facing here, it's, it's tough.
Well, we gotta, we gotta do it, we just got to figure out how to make it happen, so. Sixty-two.
On sixty-two, under wastewater services, have we heard from the utility authority as to whether or not there's going to be an increase this year in?
I don't get that, I'm, I'm assuming-
Not yet, yeah, I've, I've reached out, we won't give until probably December, I do.
Okay.
It'll be the next month or so.
I mean, I wouldn't expect a big swing, but you never know.
I'm totally open that it's not, not expected.
Okay.
I just, I'm, I won't verify that.
Understand, and, and I, nobody's bound by anything, but I, I, okay, all right.
Are we doing solid waste?
He did it last time.
I'll do that.
That's the last part of this.
Okay, that's it.
So, with that, I can't expect you on all, whoa, that's too much, you didn't. So what we'll do is, as I said when I started, at least by Tuesday, ideally by Friday, I will be able to, with Ms. Kirkow, to give you a proposed balanced budget for you to review, and then after Tuesday's regular meeting, next Tuesday regular meeting, we'll set a, another one of these workshops to go over that proposed balanced budget, and then at, at the next workshop, after you have your chance to ask questions on the proposed recommended balanced budget, you'll set your public hearing, and then make sure you're on, on the timeline to adopt this FY twenty twenty budget by September fifteenth. That's the, that's the timeline we're working under, and so in the meantime, if you have any questions or any comments or anything you want to note between now and then, please reach out to us, but by, at least by Tuesday, hopefully by Friday, you will have your proposed balanced budget in hand.
Friday of this week?
Yes.
Okay.
That's my goal, if nothing else, by next Tuesday at your meeting, at the, at the latest.
Okay.
It'll be Friday.
That's my goal.
Frank, a question for you, how are revenues looking? I know a few months ago you said we were a little bit slack, and-
As far as-
Sales tax, I think, was down.
Sales tax a little bit down, level was a little bit down, and that's why we did that, that budget amendment a few weeks ago to accommodate that shortfall, so we reduced this FY nineteen's budget. FY twenty twenty, as you'll, if you compare the two numbers, it's a little bit lower versus FY nineteen's, but we are still operating under the impression that y'all will do, if possible, lower millage rate, so we are working off that number to give you a balanced budget, so.
So I'm sending final taxes, you know, that will-
That won't be for another couple of weeks or so, but, but-
A couple of weeks to trickle in.
We feel pretty confident, Ms. Kirkow has talked with the county a number of times, and it continues to be in Tetcher County, I feel pretty confident that we have a decent number on the, on the millage that we need, so.
Okay.
That's it.
With that said, anything else we have, if you will entertain a motion to go into closed session for consideration of executive session?
So moved.
Great. So we had a motion to go into executive session to see if we need to, so. With that said, thank everyone for coming tonight, all you two that are here. Now, I appreciate you coming though, brah.